This is Viewpoint, a presentation of the News and Public Affairs Department of AM 1490 WHBB. We welcome your input on the issues of the day. You can contact us on the Viewpoint line by calling 875-1490. The opinions discussed by our callers may not necessarily reflect those of the management and staff of AM 1490 WHBB. And now here's today's Viewpoint.
And good morning and welcome into the Tuesday Morning Viewpoint. For this Tuesday morning, August the 19th, 2025, I'm your host, Randy Williams. And our guest this morning is Reverend LaBaron Mack. Good morning Reverend LaBaron Mack.
Good morning Randy, how are you this morning?
Good. You know, when we first met and since we've known, I didn't always know you as Reverend.
That's right, that's right.
I'm still getting used to saying Reverend.
Listen, don't, don't worry about that Randy. Look, I had a preacher tell me one time, um, he said, listen, technically guys, there's only one Reverend and that's God. So if they call you Reverend, take it as a compliment.
Right, I hear you. You know, and there's some people. There's a lot of ministers that don't want to be referred to as Reverend anymore.
For that very reason.
That's why.
That's, that's, that's the reason why I would tell anybody, Randy, you can call me LaBaron, you can call me brother, just don't call me late for breakfast, lunch or dinner.
Speaking like a true minister.
Yes sir!
Alright, so we're gonna hold the calls for a little while as we get into, um, talking about, um, Reverend LaBaron Mack and what he's running for now. What are you running for?
I'm running for President of the Selma City School Board. That's right, seven days away Selma. Seven days away when you go out with praying to everybody who's eligible to vote. Uh, by the way, absentees, you can still get them in up to Thursday, I believe is the day.
Be careful with the absentees.
Yeah, yeah, be careful. But if you can't be at, I would, I love, I just love showing up on voting day. I'll be at my pre-sake, I'll probably be number one. If I'm not number one, I'm not gonna be past number 10. I'm gonna be there early.
Right.
Uh, to make sure that you exercise your constitutional right, uh, as a citizen of this great nation and of this community. We're seven days away. We're trying to finish up strong this week. Uh, we want everybody to please go out and vote. Municipal elections are critical because it's directly affecting the citizens.
Right.
Municipal elections are so important. So please, everybody, go out and vote. And my prayer is that you'll vote for me, for President of the Selma City School Board.
Okay, let's, I don't want to assume that everybody is familiar with you and your background. So I, and I do this with all the candidates, kind of start from ground zero.
Yes sir.
Uh, tell us about, you know, where you were born and where you went to school and, and what your, um, educational level is and, and, and professionally what you've done and what you're doing now.
Outstanding. Thank you Randy, very good. Uh, I'm LaBaron Mack, I'm a son of Selma. I was born, like we talked the last time, I was born at Good Samaritan Hospital, right here in Selma on, in April, on April the 24th, 1968. I would tell my, my late mother, hey, that was the most important day of your life, you had me. Uh, but born and raised here in Selma, um, graduated from Selma High School, class of 1986, shout out to them. Uh, we're getting ready to celebrate our 40th, uh, class reunion coming up here soon. Shout out to our president, brother Chad Mitchell, who's, uh, he's already in the process, uh, he and his committee of getting everything ready for us. Uh, Randy, we have the record, the class of 1986, that was the largest class ever to graduate from some high schools, almost 400 of us. It was like 390, either 392, Chad may have to call in to tell me. It was either 392 or 397. We were the largest, we were the largest class ever from Selma High.
What was the, the ratio breakdown about?
You're looking at 49-51, 49-51. But we were, we were huge. It, we, it's funny Randy, at our graduation, we didn't have a keynote speaker. We didn't have time for it. We didn't have time for it. You got there, it was an opening prayer. We did the, we did the Selma High School alma mater song. After that, the superintendent and the principal, they started calling names to get us out of there. Cause it was, again, you're talking about almost 400 people waiting on that beautiful moment. And again, the moment's about the parents. Uh, um, anyway, I tell people all the time, your high school diploma, that one belongs to mom, dad, big mom and your auntie. Your college diploma is what really belongs to you. But that high school, nope, that's their folks. I'll tell you, Randy, for like the first year after I graduated, I didn't even see my diploma. Cause between my mom, my dad and my big mom, and that diploma was being tossed around between all of them. But, um, did that, graduated, uh, had the opportunity to attend the University of Alabama, where I graduated, um, in 1991. And shortly after that, I began to do some work. I got tested up on the East Coast, did some work, working for a youth agency. And I got a call from former Superintendent Dr. James Carter, who said, hey, LaBaron, I want you to come back to Selma. Uh, that debate program that you did, uh, the performing arts that you did, I want you to come back and I want you to resurrect that here in Selma City. Are you interested? And like I said last time, I told him, how soon do you need me? Uh, so from 1996 to 2004, the citizens of Selma, they trusted me to teach their children. And like I said previously, Randy, I never worked a day in my life from 1996 to 2004 because it was so much fun. All of my students, I don't want to start calling names. I love them all. All of them are important to me. When I see them now and they tell me, hey, I remember, I remember the things that you taught me. I remember what was done to school. That was arguably the most fun professionally that I ever had. After that, from 2004 up to, for 19 years, from 2000, uh, well, actually 2006 up to 20, up to 20, 23, 24, I had the opportunity to work for the Professional Teachers Organization, AEA. I served for 14 years as the direct representative for seven school systems. They were in Marengo County, Dallas County, Willcoast County, and South Dakota County. I served the heart of the Black Belt from the middle of the state over to the Mississippi line. The last five years that I served in AEA, I had the opportunity to serve as the Southern Regional Manager, which meant that I was responsible for a territory. If you draw a line on the state map, right underneath Jefferson County, from that line all the way down to Mobile, I had that entire territory. Um, and I will talk about it in a minute. But it's those experiences that I've had with multiple school systems, not just the ones that I was directly responsible for, but even those in Northern Alabama. It's those experiences that have prepared me for this task that I'm running for right now. Again, if the citizens have enough faith in me to make me the President of the Selma City School Board, one of the things that they can guarantee is they can rest easy knowing that I'm sitting in that seat because they know that I'm gonna be working to create the best policies that are going, that will be in place, not just for the students, but for the parents and all stakeholders in the community. And they can make sure I will squeeze George Washington's face off of a dollar bill. They won't have to worry about financial issues when it comes to me in terms of what the Board of Education itself will be responsible for.
Now, are you presently employed or working?
I'm retired Randy, I, I retired, uh, and I'm loving every minute of that, which also gives me more time. But my primary job, we were talking about it earlier, I have been blessed. I am the pastor of the Little Rock Missionary Baptist Church here in Selma. Shout out to Little Rock Missionary Baptist Church and all of its congregations. I love them and I know they love me too cause they put up with me. Uh, but that's what I, that's what I do now.
Okay. The million dollar question, why are you running for, uh, President of the School Board?
Outstanding, great question Randy. I'm running for President of the Selma City School Board because of where we are in this day and age at this time. This time I have been prepared for. We're in a difficult situation as it relates to public education initially. We're in the midst of a teacher shortage. People don't want to talk about that Randy. And it's not just in Alabama. It's not just in our community. It's a teacher shortage nationwide. When you look at the, when you look at the reputation of public education, public education gets beat up on every day, all day. If, if there's, if something's going wrong in the community, oh, the school system is horrible. If something happens that's bad, oh, the school system is horrible. I've even heard some candidates, I had to bite my tongue. I've even heard some candidates in the municipal election here in Selma. I've heard some of them say, well, the school systems are bad and da, 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 da. And one of the things that I want to do is I want to be that ambassador to stand up for the Board of Education. No, our school systems are not bad. If you're gonna say that the school systems in Selma are bad, you're gonna have to bring LaBaron Mack, the empirical data to show that the schools are bad. Because I've got information to tell you that not only are we good, but we are improving. When you look at the test scores and all of the measurements that they use in the state of Alabama for school systems, it's showing that Selma's on the rise. Again, the biggest thing, uh, that we had happen in the assessment on this past year Randy, because you know, come third grade, all of the kids have to be on, uh, by law, all the kids have to be at a certain level. One of our babies in the Selma City School System, she made a perfect score.
Oh, you were, weren't you at the, um, um, the 60th?
Yes sir.
Anniversary for education and when Dr. Cheston made her presentation and the young lady, people started giving her money.
Of course, of course.
She made a pretty decent amount of money that night.
Yes, she did. It's a perfect score, which takes me back Randy to the whole concept of, for us on the Board of Education, I'm running because there needs to be someone that's willing to stand up and fight for our babies. There needs to be someone that's willing to stand up and fight for our employees and fight for our school system if it becomes necessary. And I'll come back to that other part in just a second. But you're right, that young lady who made that perfect score, she should be the face of the school system. She should be the face of the school system because of what she did. Because here's what we do know. This is the empirical data. This is in my opinion, this isn't what somebody else said. The empirical data shows us that if we create a safe environment for our kids in Selma City, if we make sure that the teachers have the necessary resources, not just the teachers, but everybody that's involved in the workforce in public education, and all the rest of us have to do is just get out of the way. And if you're a preacher and you're God fearing and praying, if we do that, the kids are gonna take care of everything else.
Well, you know, uh, at the end of the day, um, we have got to, all of us that are serious about improving the quality of life in Selma and Dallas County, uh, begin to change that narrative. We control the narrative.
You better be careful because you just preached a sermon sir. You just preached a sermon.
The Lord knows where he wants us. I, I don't want any spirit to spank you, but I, but I don't think he's, I don't think that's the way he wants us.
I hear you.
I'm trying to stay in my lane, you know what I mean?
I hear you.
Speaking of which, now, so what's, what is the role of the, uh, uh, School Board President in, in, to the Board and to the Superintendent? How does that work?
Outstanding. Glad you asked that question because I, but I'm knocking on doors. That's the first thing that comes out. The President of the Selma City School Board has the capacity as President to set the agenda for each one of the meetings. Now, of course, there are certain things that are going to be mandatory that you must do in a School Board meeting. But it is the President who works with the Superintendent to set the agenda up. If there's an issue that needs to be brought forward, if there are some concerns that parents have, uh, and they want to address them with the Board, or if there are ideas that the parents have and they want to address before the Board, because that's one of the things our community needs to understand. You don't just go in front of the Board of Education to bring problems. You can get in front of the Board of Education and say, hey, I have this idea. I'm running this company. I have this program. I would like for the Board of Education to look at that. It's that Board President that's gonna make sure that that's gonna be a part of the agenda. If you come up and you say, look, I know people, I know money is tight or whatnot, but there are some communication skills that I have. There are some things that I'd like to bring to the students. Is it possible for us to get together where we can partner up? And I can have some students to come to the radio station and be in here with me, uh, on a Monday, Wednesday or Friday, say from 8:00 to 9:00 a.m.? Again, those are the things that the President will place on the agenda to bring forward to the Board itself. The Board only has power per se when the President bangs the gavel and opens up a meeting. And it is incumbent upon not just the President, but the Board to work together, because our primary responsibility is policy. Making sure that our policies are effective, making sure that our policies are good, not just for the students, but for all of the education employees and for the community in general. That's the primary function of not just the President, but of all of the members of the Board of Education. And we work in harmony with the Superintendent. One of the big issues, and again, this is the second reason why I'm running. Uh, Randy, one of the big issues is we've got to create a working relationship and a harmonious relationship between the Board and the Superintendent. Again, everybody knows our track record. We don't have to, uh, we don't have to hash all of that up. But since, uh, Dr. Carter, you've had upwards, if you count interims, you've had upwards of 11 or 12 different superintendents. Now, part of that happened with the state takeover, but you've had that many different superintendents.
That's too many.
In a short period of time, that's too many. And it's difficult for you to get continuity. We need continuity. I'm a firm believer of the concept, Randy, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. And the way you can avoid that is to make sure that the Superintendent and the Board are on the same page when it comes to how we handle our children. You know, again, when we're out here and we're running and we're knocking on doors and we're talking to, uh, and we're talking to the citizenry, that's the first thing that come out of our mouth. Oh, it's all for the children, it's all for the children. But the proof's in the pudding.
You know, and, um, uh, in conversations I've had repeatedly, the one, um, theme that keeps coming up is people are concerned about the stability in their position as Superintendent.
And that's critical. Cause here's the thing Randy, here's the thing. We don't have to like each other. We can, we can agree to disagree. Again, as long as the reason why we're at the table is for the sake of our children. We can disagree on things, but let's come, at some point, we're gonna reach, we're gonna reach that fine line, if you will. We're gonna reach that point where we're gonna say, okay, this works for everybody. Let's move forward for the sake of the children. We don't have to go out to dinner after the fact, you know, I may be mad because I didn't get all I want, but it doesn't matter. That's the thing. Again, like I said earlier, if we make sure that the kids have a safe environment, if we give the teachers and all of the support professionals the resources that they need, all we gotta do is get out of the way. The kids are gonna take care of everything that they need to take care of. That's the formula. That's why I'm running. I want to make sure that I can help to establish that level of consistency that we used to have. Because you can say whatever you want to about Dr. James Carter, but he was Superintendent for 12 years.
And before him, it was, uh, uh, Mr. Pickett.
That's right.
And he probably did what, for 30 years?
I think it was, I wanna say it was like 31. Don't quote me. I'm like I say this.
It was a long time.
Randy, he was the Superintendent, his name was on my gradu-, my diploma. So that's what we, that's what we're looking for. Again, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. But we gotta work towards that. We can't just talk about it. We can't just put it up on a sign and put that sign up in somebody's yard. That's something that we got to work on.
Now, um, how does the, or how would you, uh, if elected a School Board President, be able to impact policy?
Outstanding. I would be able to impact policy Randy from this perspective. Again, remember what I said earlier. The President gets to set the agenda. When it comes to policy, that's the responsibility of not only the President, it's the responsibility of the entire Board. I'm gonna give you a prime example, if I may, of, of your question in action. One of the things that I was able to do, as I said before, I've worked all over the state with Boards of Education and policy. In Mobile, the support professionals had an issue because, as everybody in public education knows, Randy, you don't get paid but once a month. And that's generally at the end of the month. That's when educators are paid. The support professionals were going through hardships in Mobile, the largest school district in our state. Matter of fact, it's the largest school district in the Southeast. Uh, you're talking upwards of 8,000 employees that are down in Mobile. Here's what happened. The support professionals came to us, our professional organization, and said, is there any way that we can move, put some policy together to get paid twice a month? You're looking at one of the authors of that policy. We put that policy together. We took it before the Board of Education in Mobile and the Superintendent and the Board voted to implement that policy. That's how I can directly affect, I can directly affect what's going on with the Selma City School System because I'll bring that 19 years of experience with me. I've helped, I've helped to develop policy in terms of the grievance procedure, uh, as it relates, as it relates to the employees. These are just some of the skillset that I have, that I've garnered over my 19 years of experience. And I want to bring that to Selma City. As I said before, Randy, trust me. If I become President of the Board of Education, everybody in this community, working with you, everybody in this community is gonna know all of the policies that directly affect not only the students, but directly affect the employees and our community, the parents. I'll be honest with you, uh, just as a side note, generally, when you're dealing with meetings that involve municipalities and local governments and the community, when a person comes up to speak or to bring something to that particular body, whomever it is, and I'm just gonna deal with the school system, Randy, three to five minutes may not necessarily be enough time to get across an outstanding position. I'm not saying go unlimited.
So what do you, what do you do?
How you handle that is, how you handle that quite simply is this, you can, you can adjust your board policy to say, hey, let's give the folks a minimum of 10 minutes rather than three to five. Because again, I've been in situations where five minutes goes by just like that. So again, and, and what does that do? What that does is whomever comes before the Board, it will give them the opportunity to say, look, I can at least get my point out. That's just one of the things. Now, of course, as the President, it would have to be voted on and passed by the Board. But with me, you can at least count on that conversation taking place. We can talk about it even if we don't change it. That's the importance of your Board of Education. And at some point, while we're rolling through, make sure I come back and I talk to you about the Focus Act. Because that's another example of how policy was not only going to directly affect students and employees, but how it's actually going to affect the community. So don't, don't forget, make sure I talk about the Focus Act when it comes to adjusting policy.
Now, um, again, speaking of policy, um, when it comes to suspensions?
Oh yes.
In school or out school or in the alternative school, uh, and the dress code and students', um, handbooks and rights and, and parents' rights and responsibilities, where are you on, on those issues?
Those issues are critical because again, you're in the wheelhouse of the Board of Education itself Randy, with what you were talking about. The student code of conduct is something that is put together by the Board of Education. Uh, the nuts and bolts of it may be given to the School Board Attorney, but it ultimately, it becomes the Board of Education who has the responsibility of voting that, of voting that code of conduct handbook into policy. And once it becomes policy, then it is the responsibility of the Superintendent to implement said policy. However, the Board does have to say so in terms of how you set that up structurally. Um, and it, and the easiest way for me to explain it, that would be even easier Randy, I'm gonna jump right into the Focus Act if that's okay.
Well, put, put a pit over that because I don't want to stop you.
Okay.
Uh, as we get into that, we do, we did have a call.
Oh, great.
No, I thought.
Hold on, I'm sorry, please call back.
I need to take this break.
No problem.
And we'll be back with more after these messages. Our guest this morning is, uh, Reverend LaBaron Mack. And he is running for the, uh, Presidency for the School Board of the City of Selma.
I'm still glad you asked that question about policy.
And we're still on Facebook.
Yes, yes, it'd be the Focus Act.
Right. Well, oh yeah, see, and I don't, I don't know what the Focus Act and that, that cell phone thing and, and public safety issues and, you know.
That's what it's about. And that's just what it's basically saying. What you have happened in my government is this.
Right.
The state passed the law. The implementation of the law is gonna fall.
Local. Everybody's doing some.
What they're basically saying is, wow, instruction is taking place.
Right.
No student is allowed to have a cell phone on or even on their person.
Right. And I guess my concern with that, with all this concern about the, if you should have an active shooter situation, what do you do, you know, what do the kids do?
And guess what Randy, and I'll talk about it when we come back, one of the biggest things with that entire issue is this. There, if there are some ways and some ideas that we can get, the public needs to be at the table. That's where your PTO's come in.
I got you.
That's why all of that other stuff, so that you have everybody on the table. You go ahead and say, well, my granddaddy taught me a long time ago Randy. If you ain't at the, if you ain't, oh, at the table, you on the menu. You're on the menu. So, and again, you may have a parent who has a great idea. Look, here's how you do that. And we'll go forward. Yeah, that's just one example.
Here we go. 1490, uh, WHBB now. And I have to plead, um, uh, ignorance, um, uh, to, uh, to some of the, uh, educational, uh, uh, legal uh, acts that have taken place. And we're gonna come to the phone line in a minute. Uh, but what is the Focus Act?
Here's the Focus Act in a nutshell for all of our parents. Hey, how you doing? Here's what it is for our parents and for our students. It has to do with cell phones. What the Alabama Legislature did, excuse me, when they passed the Focus Act was this. As long as instructional time is taking place at a school, whether it's Meterview Elementary, whether it's RB Hudson Middle, whether it's Selma High School, as long as instructional time is taking place, no student is allowed to have their cell phones on, active or with them. That's the actual law that was passed. Here's where the School Board come in, comes into play. The implementation of the Focus Act. How are you gonna do it? Number one, one of the things you have to consider is this, because cell phones are such a, are such a serious part of our culture. Cell phones for some of our kids is like an extension of their own body.
Right.
What kind of policy are you going to put in place for that? Number one, what the Board is gonna have to decide is this. Do you want the policy to be punitive? Or do you want the policy to simply be just a reminder? Here's what I mean by that. Let's say a student has their cell phone on and they get caught with it. Do you just take the cell phone away and give it back to them at the end of school? Or if they, or do you just go straight to a punitive phase where you say, okay, if you get caught with these cell phones and you know you violated the law, and administration would be within their rights to say that, you're gonna get three days of after school suspension. The Board is left, uh, the, the, the implementation of that law is gonna be left up to the Board. And like we were saying during the break, you're either at the table or you're on the menu. I believe that PTO representatives should be at the table, giving their input in terms of what that particular policy implementation should look like. The Board should want to invite the parents in because it's gonna directly affect the parents.
At the bottom line, the parents are gonna be the, and that's what I was asking.
And Randy, they need to be at the table. You should not be implementing policy that's gonna directly affect students, especially if it's punitive and you don't have parents at the table. There's something wrong with that picture if you choose to do that. So as Board President, I could tell you, citizens of Selma, next week, when you go vote now, when you go vote on August 26th and you put me into that seat, just know this, you're going to be at the table. And as far as LaBaron Mack is concerned, your input is not only desired, it's gonna be expected. I'm gonna be mad if we don't have parents at the table when it comes to dealing with policy and the development of that policy. And if we do that together, then everybody's on the same page. It's like it was Randy, when you and I were growing up. If you cut up in the community, Ms. Moore's sitting on her porch, she had carte blanche to beat your brains out. And by the time you got home, you got another whipping. We need to have everybody on the same page. Because again, the law is clear. They don't need to be worried about their cell phones or on their cell phones in the middle of instructional time.
Well, and I, and my concern was when that, when that was being debated was, or if there's ever an active shooter.
Exactly.
Or some other emergency that parents need to know what's happening with their children, you know? And I think that there's some schools, I understand, that, um, are placing the cell phones in a bag or some kind of.
That's right.
And then some, you can have them on your person, but have them off. But, you know, I don't know which is best. But my, my main thing would be concerned about the safety for the student.
And Randy, we would need someone from that perspective, whether it's you or anyone else. We would need somebody at the table voicing that when we're making the decision. Because again, now, once the decision is made and the Board votes on it,
That's it, huh?
That's the implementation unless, unless there's a desire to change it or whatever else the case may be.
Let's see if you have a question or two. Okay, that caller is gone.
Okay, call back.
Uh, Viewpoint, you're on air.
Question is coming up. We can have a minute planned. It's been long since we've been on good government. Good people in it. Now, I have a question from, uh, uh, Reverend Mack. And this is, um, it has to do with, when I served on the Negro Women's Goals for the State of Alabama for a number of years, um, back in the middle 90s, I would like to find out if you are in favor of a one-counted school system that we promised during that time that was going to come to pass. How do we have to make it and put it off?
Yes ma'am. Um, and, and thank you for that question caller. I don't know, I don't know, is it appropriate for, because this is my neighbor. Can I call her name?
Well, try not to.
Try not to, well, well, neighbor, you know, I know, you know, I know who you are. Uh, thank you for that question. I am always open for a conversation such as that. It's gotta be something. I am always open for conversations such as that. It's gotta be something that is the will of the people. Again, if the will of the people in this county is to merge both school systems, I have no issues or concerns with engaging in that conversation. And if it's the will of the county to move forward, I would not be an individual who would stand in the way of that. But once again, like we were saying earlier, Randy, this can't just be a conversation that happens in isolation. Where only a handful of folks decide one way or another, that they're gonna do it, and then leave, you know, and then just bring it to the public and say, well, this is what we decided. And if we're not gonna change it, this is what it's gonna be, one way or another. No, we need to have input from all stakeholders as it relates to that concept. And by the way, in my nineteen years of experience, I too have had the opportunity to work with three different school, well, three different counties that have merged school systems. So I have the paperwork, I have access to it, and I know what to do if this is something that we want to engage in here in Dallas County Selma. But I'm always open to that conversation. Thank you for that question, neighbor.
Uh, finances, money. Um, I understand that the, uh, two million or four million that initially was taken away was given back. Uh, and so, in your position, uh, elected as school board president, what would you do in terms of being able to identify, um, new sources of revenue for the school board?
I'm always open to those conversations as well. Um, again, the, the city, um, is in partnership with the school system. The city itself gives money. Um, the city school system also gets money from a county. Abolorm tax that was done a couple of years ago as well. I'm always open. I'm always open for looking at different ways in which we can deal with revenue. Because again, that's part of being an ambassador for the school system, which is what the Board of Education is. I'm always open to any conversation, whatever it takes to get resources in, in order for our babies to succeed. If we can get more resources in, whatever that is, and it's the will of the people, LaBaron Mack as president of the board is moving forward with whatever that particular initiative is and whatever it looks like. As long as it's legal and ethical, I'm one hundred percent in with that particular approach.
Okay. Uh, let's take another question before we take our break. Uh, viewpoint, you're on the air.
What about having two people now on the school board? I think, uh, I, I think they're talking about people in the same household on the school board. Cause there is one candidate who's married to, uh, who's spouse, uh, one of the other candidates. And, uh, they, they, they people really question as to whether that's gonna be, uh, in our advantage or disadvantage. And, uh, I guess they're talking about, uh, but anyway, I just wanted to break that out because, uh, I want you to get a little thought into what people are saying about the two candidates. Oh, one candidate, oh, where they own the county school board and the spouses, money, or have surge on the city school board. And is that effective or not effective?
In, in terms of that particular question, neighbor, uh, what, what you will be looking at is this. Alabama has very defined laws of ethics. And if it's not breaking any of the ethical laws, then it's not my place as president of the board of education if the citizens elect me next week. It's not my place to address that. It's the voters. The voters are gonna have the opportunity to address that, not just in our municipal election, but even in county elections as well. Uh, every single seat, uh, for the county school system is an elected position. It is the citizens themselves who have the opportunity to address that. But in terms of just big broad picture, because again, Board of Education must operate within the law. If it is not an ethical violation, then there's nothing much that the Board of Education can do in that particular instance. This is something that is left up to the voters.
Well, you know, the, the Ethics Commission and, and many of the ethics laws, I think, are really necessary in a way to see that they're there. If they're enforced, you know. And, um, uh, I hear about some things happening, um, in other parts of the black belt, not necessarily, uh, with the school boards, with some other commissions, where you've got some real unethical behavior, taking, I don't know how to get in the way with it.
Well, there is an arm in Montgomery. There is an entity in Montgomery that is designed to address those issues. Now, in terms of the processes of what it takes to get that arm to move into action. That's a whole nother story, but I, but trust me when I tell you, Randy, I clearly understand. I clearly understand what you're talking about.
Okay, we're gonna take this break. We'll be back with more. Our guest this morning is Reverend LaBaron Mack. He's running for the, uh, uh, city school board presidency, and we'll be back with more. And we're also on Facebook. We'll be back with more after these messages.
Even if the governor vetoed something, you can override it. So again, he, at that time. When we turn all this Facebook stuff on, I'll tell you my way out the door. But yes, sir. He was the single most powerful politician in the state and he went down. The same ethics commission that he put together.
Well, I hate to say it, but then from what I'm hearing, the dead door, and it's really, uh, to the detriment of the people in that county, I hope somebody calls the Ethics Commission.
Yeah. Because when we get off, when we get off the air, I wanna have a conversation with you real quick, again, real quick about that. Cause I know, actually know exactly what you're talking about. And it is awful. It is awful.
I might be able to choose something real quick before I have to go on.
Don't let anybody stop you. Do you know when they stop serving? Just I check it up. Do you know when they stop serving breakfast over there? Gotcha. So that's how they run it. I keep that, I'm gonna keep that in mind, man. And I saw that biscuit. I ain't gonna lie, I got jealous. I might get me one in the morning. They start at five thirty. That's even better.
I have to finish chewing before the break.
Take your time, man. Well, no, you don't have a lot of time, but take your time. Man, and real quick, Randy, if you could make it, we'd love it if you could, uh, stop by the church. If you're gonna come get something, you'd be loved if you would stop by Sunday.
What time is it start?
Two o'clock. I, I know you've got responsibility at Brown Chapel.
No, I'm here now.
I got you. I was about to say, look, I know you got responsibility at Brown Chapel. Hell, your pastor jumping on me though.
I'm here on Sundays from six until, uh, from, well, from six until. And then I lay out the, uh, uh, I lay out the program on Sunday from six AM to twelve midnight.
If you get a chance, you can sneak away.
I'm trying to make it over.
Yeah, even if, even if you're gonna, just come out and grab you something to eat, man, come on. Yes, indeed. Hold on. Take your time.
Fourteen ninety WHBB. Our guest this morning is Reverend LaBaron Mack. He's running for the, uh, president of Selma City School Board. What is your basic platform?
My basic platform is real simple. I operate off of the mantra of our children, our schools, our system. This is, this is a bottom-up campaign. We must keep our focus on our babies. Keep our focus on our students. Because you know, just like I do, when it comes to any community, the number one driving force in terms of economic development. If an entity comes in here, whatever company it is you name, off of Forbes five hundred or whatever, if it's not the very first thing that they're gonna look at, no later than third thing that they're gonna look at in a county or in a city is its school system. We are the, we are the bedrock of the community. And that's what we wanna continue to make sure that we're doing. We wanna create a school system where if somebody from, you pick a company, um, if somebody from Toyota wants to do something here in Selma, and they look at the school system, alright, the school system's good, we can check that off. That's what we want. We don't want the school, we don't want it to be a scenario where I would come and I would establish a business here, I would build something here, but your school system ain't up to par. So nah, we're gonna overlook your community and we'll go somewhere else. Nope, we want them right here in Selma. Selma has so many built-in national resources that would be inviting for industry to come in. All we have to do is make sure we're doing our best in terms of the school system itself. There shouldn't be any issue with us getting industry in Selma. That's how critical and that's how important the school system itself is. Again, if the kids are safe, they're in a safe environment where they can learn. Give the resources to the educational professionals who know what they're doing, and then get out of the way. Allow those professionals to teach our babies. Our babies are going to perform.
Now, what about the racial component? Or is there a racial component? So, Selma's, um, uh, racial diversity has gone down to what I think, uh, the population is approximately eighty percent African-American, but twenty percent is still substantial. And who knows what the future holds. And so I guess my question is, um, uh, uh, do you, uh, uh, I hate to say it doesn't look good, but it doesn't look good when you don't have any diversity. It's just all black. You know what I'm saying? You know, all those seeing more white families look like they're bringing their children into the public exclusism and that. That should relieve some of the financial burden. And so, so i- is that on your radar screen?
Yes, of course. It's always on my radar screen. One of the things that we have to focus in on and pay attention to in terms of our population. Our population is going down. One of the things that can maintain the population and increase the population, it goes to that concept I like to refer to, Randy, as the field of dreams concept. If you build it. They will come. If you create a school system, again, where parents know, uh, regardless of their ethnicity, they know their child is going to be safe, their child is going to be well taken care of, and they know that their child is going to learn everything that they need to know in order to be a productive citizen.
And not be discriminated.
And not be discriminated against as well. They're coming. I just believe, I'm crazy enough to believe that because again, I have seen this.
Well, you said you graduated in eighty-six, wasn't it?
Yes, nineteen eighty-six. It can be done. It was done then and it can be done again. Like, I'll ask you this. Uh, if I were to put you on the spot right now, why do you think that Auburn City, Baldwin County and Huntsville, why do you think those are three of the top ten school systems in the state in terms of population growth? It's exploding. Well, technically, we know why it's Baldwin. I don't give that one away. It's the beach. It's location, 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 location. But guess what they're doing down there, Randy? You have two smaller school systems that have popped off from Baldwin. Orange Beach is its own school system. So they're growing. Auburn, good God almighty. Exploding. You got, you got folks in other counties and cities. That are close. No, they ain't trying. They're there. They're sending, they're sending them there. The same thing can happen here in Selma. If the parents know, again, their babies are gonna be safe, their babies are gonna be well fed, their babies are gonna be taught, then they will come. There's a, there, there's a whole difference between that level of comfortability and that level of uncomfortability. You follow me? And we.
Well, you gotta be intentional.
That's right. You've got to be here.
People in. And I think it makes a difference, uh, when you can see not just African-Americans, or not just Caucasian, or not just Asian, um, and I guess the, the, the school district that comes to mind na- uh, nas- nationally would be, I think it's, um, Arlington, Virginia. Where the school, you know, they were getting, they were top math scores, the math, number one and everything. For the heavy Asian population, and the Asian students have a reputation for being hard workers. You know what I mean? So, and so that, that gets into work ethic and not necessarily intelligence.
No, it's not.
Culture. You know, we've got some real cultural issues that we're gonna deal with.
And trust me when I tell you, once again, my, the president of Selma City School Board, our baby's making perfect scores on assessment. I want that to be the norm. I don't want that to be an abnormality. I wanna create a culture and an environment where our children are showcased, where our children are loved, and where our children are cared for in such a way where all of the needs are met. If you don't mind, give me two minutes to go, just to go straight education on you, here for just a heartbeat. As educators, when they're trained, when we are trained, when it comes to dealing with a child in the classroom, there are two concepts that you gotta pay attention to. It's Maslow, and then it's Bloom's. Bloom's taxonomy for all the educators out there that deals with the learning and how people, and how, and how folks learn and grow. But Maslow, that's even simpler. And I'll give it to you this way. Food, clothing, and shelter. Maslow's theory says you gotta deal with food, clothing, and shelter first. Because those, those things that hinder us, that you were talking about, that comes from the Maslow. That comes from the issues of dealing with food, clothing, and shelter. How in the world can I teach Peter Rabbit? If Peter Rabbit is hungry, that's not gonna happen. I can be the best teacher in the world. We gotta make sure we take care of him. Well, you make sure he gets the breakfast.
Well, that's where the school lunch and school breakfast. Programs came.
Exactly. So you've got, as long as you remember that, and in twenty twenty-five moving forward, it's even more. Yes, it's still the same, and it's even more critical for us now. But again, get the babies all the resources that they need. They're gonna take care of the rest. They've already shown it to us.
Let's take this last break, and, uh, we'll come back and move, we'll come back to the phone line also after these messages.
The, the last statistics I got on that school system in Arlington. They literally had to turn people away. And it's a public school. But they, they were, how did the guy put it? He said it's a great problem to have. He said, but our capacity is such.
Can't handle anymore.
They're already looking at, they're already looking at, the last thing I saw said about a hundred and twenty-five million dollar building. That they wanted to put that high school.
And they wanna have, then they probably getting the money, yeah. Cause they wanna fund it.
Because they wanna fund it in there, but, and it's, and it was the parents that were driving this. My baby had to wait in line for almost da-da-da-da-da-da-da, because population's so big. They not only, they, they not only had cafeteria staff, but they actually had to get outside entities to come in to cater during lunch, because they ran out. Yeah, when you're talking about seven thousand kids.
Yeah, that's a lot of kids. And their kids too.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. But that's a great problem to have. Yes, that's a problem that we need. Uh, like I told you the last time. The Coach Maxi and Coach Williamson and, and, and the principals, uh, that were there, uh, Mr. Haygood, they literally had to throw us out of the school. They're like, hey, 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 go home. Go home, but we, we didn't wanna leave.
Right. Well, that's a good thing.
Yes, that was a great thing.
Yeah, so we gotta get back to the basics.
Yes, sir. We can get there, Randy. We can get there.
I believe we're gonna get, well, not unless, but we gotta do what we're doing. You know, we gotta, you gotta do that. Yeah, I believe it's there.
With all of the problems we got, our babies did well.
Yeah. Fourteen ninety WHBB, we're under five minutes. Caller, make it quick, please. Okay, that's as quick as you can get. They weren't there. And we're not taking any more calls. Um, now, uh, we're under five minutes. And this is your opportunity to say whatever you wanna say, Charlie.
Randy, thank you so very much. Uh, I wanna say again, good morning to the citizens of Selma, my hometown, the Queen City. Uh, as, as a lot of folks would say, the two-seven. Um, love you guys. Um, I am your servant. I am your son, Selma, and I want the opportunity to serve you in the capacity of president of the Selma City School Board. Because of the nature of the experience that I have. Again, eight years I spent in the classroom nurturing your students and teaching your students to the best of my ability. Our students, your children, to the best of my ability. I spent nineteen years honing my skills professionally. Make no mistake about it, I completely and utterly understand school board policy from top to bottom. Not only understand it, but I know how to successfully implement school board policy. Even though I wasn't sitting on the board as part of the professional organization, it was my job to make sure. That it was properly implemented because if you attempted to use those policies against the employees in a negative way. Then you have to deal with yours truly because I will be representing the membership. My brothers and my sisters here in Selma, make no mistake about it, the choice is crystal clear. For president of the Selma City School Board. Don't be fooled by the things that you hear. Or there may be someone that will say, oh, I think we'll be great one way or another. Nope, you're gonna be better with LeBaron Mack. You're gonna be better with the man who has been prepped and who has been prepared to serve. In this particular position from a professional standpoint. And I'm hungry and I'm ready to get started on your behalf. There were some people who were upset with me when I said I'm ready to go day one. That's not a catchphrase. That's a fact. As it relates to school board policy, as it relates to school environment. As it relates to looking for the best policies that can be created on behalf of not only our children. But the professionals who work in the system as well. LeBaron Mack is the single best candidate you can get for that job. And I'm humbly asking you next Tuesday, next Tuesday when you go vote, as you go down that ballot. I need you to mark LeBaron Mack for president of the Selma City School Board so that we can get to work. Our children, our schools, our system.
Okay, well, thank you. Um, thank you so much for coming in. Uh, programming note tomorrow. Um, Councilman Clay Carmichael will be our guest uh, for Viewpoint. He's running for reelection. And uh, we have several guests, really, of the week. And um, uh, oddly enough, we're gonna, we'll be having guests even on election day. That was not planned. And try, I tried to avoid that in fact, but to make a long story short, circumstances are got in the way. And so uh, there'll be someone that's running for some office each day uh, of the week on Viewpoint and we. Invite you to tune in. Uh, this gives people an opportunity to, you know, you, you can't say, you say it in two or three minutes.
That's right.
You know what I mean? And so, um, so for the candidates that were able to take advantage of coming on and, and making um. Our audience familiar with the platforms and with them, then we thank you guys and thank you for running, you know, in this heat.
My pleasure. It, it, it's my pleasure, Randy. Very quickly, can I just say thank you? Cause I've seen you running around at all of the events. Yeah, that, that takes a, that takes a lot. That takes a lot. And I know people are tired, but it's almost over and it is critical.
Yes, well, this is a critical election. Thank you. Okay. All right, we're gonna get ready for Fox News coming up next on WHBB Selma. This um, interview will also be uploaded to theselmapostero.com website. And if you go to the website, you'll see a number, all of the interviews that have been done here are being uploaded uh, to the website. In addition to the forums that took place at um, uh, the Edmund Knights Bullock Community Center. Elwood uh, uh, Community Church for ADC and the Coalition of Concerned Families. Stay tuned for Fox News up next on WHBB Selma. It is nine o'clock.